Call this meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is invocation by Northridge Baptist.
I want to read a few verses from Psalm fifty-seven and then lead us in prayer. Be merciful to me, O God, be merciful to me, for in you my soul takes refuge; in the shadow of your wings I will take refuge till the storms of destruction pass by. I cry out to God most high, to God who fulfills his purpose for me, he will send from heaven and save me. Lord, we bow together to begin this meeting and thankful for words of comfort in times when we're facing difficulties or challenges, Lord. And I know that many people leading and serving here in these capacities face them from time to time. Lord, may we look back and see your provision, look back and see how you've been loving us and caring for us. And now we pray that that would lead us forward, Lord, that you would be the one that is guiding hearts and minds as we discern your desires for even our town and our city, Lord. We're thankful for it. It is a gift from you and we trust you with her, Lord. So lead and guide tonight. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Start with the roll call.
Dosher, McCardle, Barrington, Bathke, Charts, Smith, Sabers, Gold Hammer.
Okay, we have a quorum. Approval and consent agenda items. Items appearing on consent agenda may be moved by a city council member for discussion at the beginning of the formal agenda items. Would anyone like to remove anything?
I move to approve.
Section, Mr. McCardle, second minister, Gold Hammer. Further discussion? What do you want the audience to discuss this? Okay, roll call.
Barrington, Bathke, Charts, Smith, Sabers, Gold Hammer, Dosher, McCardle.
Motion carries. Citizens input. If you need to address the mayor and members of city council on an item that was not on the agenda excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium and state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time.
Mayor, council, my name is Troy Hella-Lloyd. Basically, I'm here on behalf of myself and the property owners around the lake that have boat lifts and docks. And we're looking for some transparency from the city on what's going to happen with the lake. Um, I'm not sure why everybody around the lake calls me or asks me what's going to happen because I don't know any more than they do at this point. But they're basically wondering, is the drawdown going to happen? Is the dredge going to happen? Because if it is, they've all planned to have boat lifts and docks taken off their property, stored, which parking wrecks already got storage areas. But if it's not, I mean, there's, there's an expense to that and it's not easy to haul. You know, they're tall, they're wide, can't get under wires, stuff like that. Um, and if you have them all pay to have them hauled out and stored and then next summer there's water in the lake, they've got to pay to have them hauled back in. So there needs to be some transparency to the lake owners on what's happening because there's a lot of rumors, a lot of issues, and nothing's been really said about a timeline. Bar, when they were here a month ago, said beginning of October, possibly, but you haven't even let go yet. So is that happening? You know, there's, there's a lot of homeowners out there that have contractors already hired. James Valley to like do shoreline work and some of them are starting as we speak. And if there's still water, these contractors are going to be out of jobs. And I mean, I get a text almost every day, take my stuff out because I've got somebody to fix my wall. You know, and I'm like, I don't know why you're asking me. So is there any way you can give us a timeline or put it out publicly what's happening so that people know?
Yeah, so technically I'm not supposed to respond to you during your three minutes, but I, I do have a bunch of stuff prepared. If, if you're done, then I'll just go into my little speech. So, so Joe and I and Stephanie, we sat in with bar engineering basically every month to ask them the timeline. Um, and a week or two ago, I directed them like, we need a timeline. We were going to do a, we were going to tell everyone what was going to go on tonight, but they have requested another two weeks. And then, so I directed them for at the next city council meeting, we will have a timeline from bar engineering to know what's going on because I've heard a lot of the same stuff. People want to do shoreline repair and they need to know where their docks are going to go. Everybody wants to know when the project's going to start. And we pressed them pretty hard to get a timeline, so we should have time, we will have a timeline. We will have a timeline at the next city council meeting.
So in two weeks?
In two weeks. Is that the next city council meeting? Two weeks from, yep, two weeks from now, we'll have, we'll put it on the agenda and we'll, we will have a, an update with a timeline.
Quick question. Should we have, put it on, should we put it on for a discussion item for the next council meeting?
Yes, where it's going to be on, for sure.
That way everybody can ask questions. They'll know, they'll know when to come and when to ask questions.
Yep. Yeah, we've been asking for a timeline for a long time and it's, we're pressing them.
We've got homeowners that have already sold boats that have already, I mean, in anticipation of this and it's.
Yeah, I see a lot of boats for sale too. I don't, I don't want people to miss out on a year, for sure.
We need to know, so.
Totally agree.
Labor Day is kind of when it starts, so.
So Troy, that date is the Monday, the fifteenth.
Yep. Yeah, if we could know then, that'd be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to address the council? Okay, hearing done, we will move on. Board of Adjustment, entertain a motion for the city council recess and sit as a board of adjustment.
So moved.
Mr. Gold Hammer, second minister, Mr. Barrington. All those in favor of the motion say aye? Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Hearing an action on application for Marcy Stoltz's conditionally use permit. Mr. Jennings, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Council, planning commission recommended approval with the same three conditions for a daycare. Um, notices were sent with neighbors, publishing paper signs posted. There was one letter returned in favor. It's actually, uh, this is a rental unit, so it's the landowner that sent back the letter that they were in favor of it. They have passed a fire inspection already. I can answer any other questions that you have.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve.
Mr. Starks?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gold Hammer. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Reconvene as city council, entertain a motion for the board of adjustment to adjourn and the city council to reconvene in regular session.
So moved.
Mr. Gold Hammer, second, Mr. Barrington. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve. Special event permit application for opening night presented by Bradley's on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Parking lot closure fifty dollars and noise permit of zero dollars.
Moved to approve.
Mr. Gold Hammer, second, Mr. McCardle. Further discussion? What do you want the audience to discuss this?
Jen Bradley, Bradley's Pub and Grill. Um, this is a first year event. We have partnered with Dakota Wesleyan University. Kind of copied, that's a form of flattery, right? The University of Nebraska-Lincoln down there, the Huskers, where they kind of kick off basketball season and they do a big event. So that's what we're doing where the coaches will be speaking, both men's and women's. They are going to bring some basketball hoops to let the kids have a little bit of fun. They're going to do autograph signing and a whole bunch of things. Um, no alcohol will be removed from beyond our fence, just like normal. We're strictly just asking for the parking lot closure there and going to have a little fun surrounding that and kicking off Dakota Wesleyan's basketball season. Seems a little early, but here we go, September nineteenth. Friday, September nineteenth just also happens to be our one year anniversary of opening Bradley's next door. So we're kind of, uh, piggybacking off of each other and I think it'll be a great event. That's.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
By the way, that's one of the greatest shirts of all time. I think everyone should see how funny that is.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve participation in secondary manufacturer settlement, opioid litigation. Mr. Johnson.
All right, we just saw one of these at the last council meeting. Um, and as I explained then, we've seen several of these in the past. Um, this would be to participate in yet another settlement on the opioid epidemic issue. Um, this one, as the staff report indicates, is for the secondary manufacturers. There's a number of those listed. Um, again, I do not have a final dollar amount on what the city would see from these, but um, I guess we can open up, open up to any other questions that the council may have.
Moved to approve.
Mr. Gold Hammer.
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith. Further discussion? What do you want the audience to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve request for handicap parking spot at nine twenty West Ash. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. Uh, the church located at nine twenty West Ash is requesting a single handicap parking spot within the right of way along the curb directly south of the church. Uh, there is a map, uh, provided showing the location. Um, if approved, city staff would place a handicap parking sign within the boulevard and paint the curb. I can answer any questions you may have.
Joe, is it across from the church?
So the church, yeah, church is right to the north in that picture. So it'd be adjacent, curb adjacent to the church.
Any negative to it?
You know, it's a, it's a church that's in a residential neighborhood. You know, most churches have parking lots that would have the handicap signage. Um, it's just in a situation where they don't have, uh, off-street parking with a handicap.
Motion approve.
Mr. Sabers.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Gold Hammer. Further discussion?
Um, I'll just comment. This is our church and, um, you know, technically it probably would only need to be reserved on Sundays for a finite amount of time. Um, and I was thinking actually about that. I had mentioned that to Curtis Smith. I thought that he would be here. He's, um, in charge of our congregation. But, um, I was thinking about them. I suppose that there are other events that we have throughout the week, so maybe it's necessary. But truthfully, um, I don't know if you would want to limit that unless, I mean, we're probably the only people that park there, so maybe it's not a big deal, so.
I asked the same thing and they said if there's a wedding or a funeral, you'd still want it. So it makes sense to keep it all the time, in my opinion.
Okay, I just don't want to be like greedy, but we do have a lot of people in our congregation who need the handicap parking, so we'll all be fighting over.
That's a carpool. Okay, anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve quote for two thousand twenty-five Corn Palace mural project, two thousand twenty-five dash forty. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. Uh, this project was previously publicly advertised in bid with the bid opening date being July twenty-ninth. No bids were received. So with that, uh, we requested quotes from contractors. Uh, with that, pro-contracting was the low bid at seventy-five thousand, four hundred twenty dollars and forty-six cents. Um, funding for the work would come from the Corn Palace Fund and twenty-four, twenty-five, approximately forty-three thousand dollars was spent in wages for decorating in the fall/winter. With awarding in this quote, those part-time employees would not be needed. Um, for this fall/winter season, staff recommends awarding the quote, uh, from pro-contracting. Um, the work is not to start until October four, first and shall be completed by November fifteenth unless approved otherwise by staff. With that, we can answer any questions you may have.
Joe, what's the difference between a bid and a quote? You said you got no bids, but then you asked for quotes.
Yep, state law requires any project over a hundred thousand to be publicly bid. Uh, we thought this may reach that threshold, so we did a public bid. If you don't receive any bids, you are allowed to reach out to contractors individually and receive quotes from them. So that's, that's the process we followed.
So their seventy-five thousand is firm?
Correct.
Okay.
Joe, how many, how many murals are they going to do?
Uh, the plan is to do, I believe there's nine around the Corn Palace. Um, the Corn Palace staff will do the grasses around. Um, and they will also do, um, the corn that's on front, the, the banners. Um, it'll strictly be the, the square rectangular, um, murals.
And one more question, Joe. Is there a penalty if they don't get it done without your approval?
The way the quote is laid out, no, there would not be a penalty.
So they could take as long as we take.
Well, that's when, so if we do get into that situation, um, we could follow, um, let's say they completely abandon, there would be a legal avenue that we could follow. Um, you know, a local contractor, hopefully we don't get to that point.
Joe, for insurance, like I'm sure you've checked, they've, they've got the insurance stuff. So what, what do they have to carry? I guess I'm curious, what do you have to carry to do that?
We have in the, in the bid documents, it's our typical, I want to say, uh, a million dollar liability coverage. Um, we also are requiring this to be bonded. Um, so I take, I take that back. If we don't, if they don't perform the work, there would be the bond there that we could go back on. This, we did keep the bonding requirements in the quote for this project. Since it's a first time, you know, we're not sure exactly how it's going to go, first time project, um, so that's why we requested the bond.
Stephanie, do you want to talk about the financial difference on this?
I don't have anything to add other than what Joe mentioned. We did spend about forty-three thousand dollars in part-time wages, so the difference would have to come from the Corn Palace Fund if authorized by council.
Motion approve.
Second.
Mr. Sabers, second, Mr. Barrington. Further discussion?
Stephanie, when you talk part-time wages, that's the summer help or the part-time wages?
No, this is just from September through March last year. It's after our summer kids are gone.
I thought that was too cheap.
Yeah, no, yeah, we spend more on the summer as well.
I, I think this is a great idea, honestly, and get it completed so we're not moving into the winter months and the spring months and whatever. So, um, I, I just got a text that somebody said the TV feed is not working. Do we have any idea? That's Mitchell Telecom. That's.
Oh, really?
All I can tell you is I, I haven't pulled up on YouTube, so that's the stream we send out. So if that's working, there's nothing else on our end. We can.
Okay. Hmm, thank you.
Okay.
Unless it just dropped. Nope, it's still up.
Okay, would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve quote for Gulf and Cemetery Bike Path Project, two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-three. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. Quotes are requested from three contractors for the Gulf and Cemetery Bike Path. Uh, the return quotes, uh, had Taylor Concrete Construction LLC as the low quote at ninety-three thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy cents. And we do recommend awarding, uh, to that contractor. I can answer any questions you may have.
When would the job start?
My understanding is they want to start soon. They have a window in their schedule or this fits in well.
And, and Joe, that, uh, bid of ninety-three thousand is reasonable?
Yes. I want to say their quote per square foot was six dollars and sixty cents, or a miscellaneous curb for this is around nine.
Move to approve.
Mr. McCardle, second, Mr. Bathke. Further discussion? What do you want the audience to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action reward bid for Lake Shore Development Sanitary Sewer Project, two thousand twenty-five dash forty-two. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. Uh, bids were opened on August twenty-seventh in City Hall Council Chambers at one thirty. Eleven bids were received with the low bid being from Site Works Inc. from Sioux Falls for a hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. The project received competitive bids and staff is recommending awarding the bid to Site Works at the amount described above. I can answer any questions you may have.
Have we worked with these people before, Joe?
They did a small project for us last year on Matty Street and we had no issues with them.
Some of the line items are really strange, uh, how they, how they bid, but again, I'm sure they know what they're doing and, and for instance, you know, even like the, um, item number twelve, the next two bids was forty-two thousand, fifty-four thousand. They came in at just under eleven. Of tying into the manholes.
Yep.
I, I talked to the, to the, um, the name on the quote, not sure if it was the owner or not, but, uh, they were excited to have won the bid and are looking forward to getting started.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Mr. Barrington, further discussion? What do you want the audience to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement eight, two thousand twenty-five dash fifty, electric service at South WWTP with Central Electric. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. Um, this is similar to an agreement we had at the last meeting. However, there was a typo in that agreement. We needed to run a second, so we just put both of them on to, to clean it up. Uh, so with that, Central Electric has provided electric service to the South wastewater treatment plant for the de-watering and blower buildings. Um, with that, there will charges twenty-six thousand, twenty dollars and forty-six cents for the de-watering building and ten thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents for the blower building, um, as connection fees. And the agreement states we shall take electric service for a minimum of five years. If the service is disconnected before the five-year period, the city shall continue to pay the monthly minimum until the five-year period has lapsed. Um, staff is recommending authorizing the mayor to sign on your behalf and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Moved to approve.
Mr. McCardle.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gold Hammer. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve agreements eight, two thousand twenty-five dash fifty-one, permanent easements for first and main and seventh and main traffic light improvements. Project number twenty-two dash eight and those other agreements as listed on the agenda. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. Uh, permanent easement agreement is necessary for the installation of the traffic and signal poles on Main Street. Um, at the three separate locations listed below in the staff report. Um, the owners and locations are the Area Community Theater, northeast corner of Main and Seventh. CJG Properties LLC at the northwest corner of Main Street and Seventh. And Casey's Retail Company, the southeast corner of Main Street and First Avenue. Um, those three entities have signed the agreements, um, so I would ask that you authorize the mayor to sign on your behalf. I can answer any questions.
Moved to approve.
Mr. Gold Hammer.
Joe, when will that project be done?
Second, Mr. Smith.
Right now, the timeline, we should be wrapped up within the next month.
Right now, the timeline, we should be wrapped up within the next month with everything. There, we're working on removals. After that, they'll pour the bases, the concrete will need to cure for roughly thirty days, and then the poles will go up shortly after.
Okay, further discussion?
What's that?
It is kind of nice.
Yes.
Okay, anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries action approved agreement eight, two thousand twenty-five dash fifty-four, Airport Improvement Program Grant for Runway eighteen dash thirty-six, and the rest is shown on the agenda, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council, the council approved a pre-application for an Airport Improvement Program Grant for the design of Runway eighteen thirty-six shift reconstruction and related project improvements at their January twenty-first, twenty-five council meeting. The actual agreement is attached with FAA. Their participation is two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, or ninety-five percent of the total design fee. The total breakdown is shown below on the staff report. There's, there is a location map which shows the project area, and staff recommends council approval and to grant authorization for the mayor to sign. I can answer any questions you may have.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer. Second by Mr. McCurdle. Further discussion? What do you want else like to, in the audience like to address this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries action approved resolution R two thousand twenty-five dash sixty-four, dissolving tax increment district number sixteen. It's Beth.
All the indebtedness for TIF number sixteen has been paid in full, so this TIF will be dissolved, and the remaining funds will be paid out.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer. Second by Mrs. Church. Further discussion?
Sure. I was just gonna make sure that I pointed out to everybody that I did provide an updated TIF report for the city of Mitchell. Just a couple highlights, positive things to mention about the TIFs in the city of Mitchell. First, we have approved thirty-eight TIFs since nineteen ninety-five. Eighteen of those have been approved since two thousand and one, and we've had nine already approved in two thousand twenty-four and three so far in two thousand twenty-five. And we know we have three other potential applications coming in relatively soon, so just wanted to make sure I gave that information out. The TIFs in the city of Mitchell have resulted in an increased value of one hundred and thirteen million, five hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. The city's new TIF policy ensures that TIFs are approved as a grant and they are not counted against constitutional debt capacity anymore. The remaining twenty-six TIFs that are still active for the city of Mitchell, twenty-one are classified as economic development, one is classified as industrial, and four are classified as affordable housing. We did used to have, I think, one or two local TIFs, those have since been dissolved. It's also important to look at as of our TIFs that have been dissolved, thirteen, all thirteen have, were dissolved early because they paid off early. We really want to see that so the funds keep going back to the taxing entities. This graph on the left just shows how, how many TIFs we've really done in the last four or five years. That's the majority of all of the TIFs in the city of Mitchell. Again, that just shows your classification of TIFs and the increased increment. If anyone is interested in looking at where those TIFs exist, the report will also show a map of the areas where the current TIFs exist. This is our remaining, the one that just dissolved sixteen had an overlap with a county TIF, so we now only have one remaining overlapping TIF, which is nine in twenty-three, which is great. And then you can go through and look at how much increment has been generated by each of these TIFs if you'd like to see that in more detail. I just wanted to take a minute to talk about the positive benefits that the TIFs have brought to the city of Mitchell.
Okay, thank you.
Can you look at TIF forty-one? I'm, I'm sure it's a real easy explanation. But the current value went down from the base?
That doesn't happen.
It does.
Um, well, we are estimating this, this one, no, this one did come back, so it does happen. We have other ones that have a negative increment as well. It just gets adjusted annually from the Department of Revenue. If someone goes in and makes a request to have their taxes lower, then they will lower everything the same, too. So sometimes it's just a change by Department of Equalization, sometimes it's at the request of the owner, but that has happened. We have another one that has a negative increment right now. Those last ones that were just developed this year, you, you gotta wait for a good year to see them hit the tax roll, to know where they're gonna land.
Okay. What do you want in the audience like to discuss this?
Thank you, Mayor Steve Simpson. I have no problem with the resolution. I, I really love the, the report you just covered. The city administrator did a marvelous job. In two thousand seventeen, former Governor Dugard directed the Department of Revenue to provide an annual report, and they do, and all these active TIFs are available, but not as much detail as we see here tonight, so I really appreciate it. The issue, I'm gonna dig a little deeper. We have thirteen inactive TIFs that ended early, so my question is, why did they end early? And that would take a lot of work to figure that out. I, I got one theory, okay, so that's a theory, I can't prove it with numbers, but if you look at the increment value calculation of a hundred and thirteen million, the base value remains the same throughout the entire life of the TIF. That, that's a simplifying assumption, but in reality, valuations would go up for that base property due to inflation, and we, we've seen large valuation increases in our properties. So some of the increment is actually taking credit from valuation increases that would happen anyway. So it's kind of a minute thing, but statewide, it could add up to a pretty significant amount of money. So with that said, I appreciate what you're doing with this.
And Steve, you are correct, when the TIFs are approved, they assume no growth in assessed value. It's just at that base, so that could be part of it.
Right.
Okay, thank you. What do you want in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries motion to adjourn to executive session according to SDC L one dash twenty-five dash two, three legal.
So moved.
Goldhammer, second by Mr. McCurdle. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries there will be no action after executive session.